Sunday for me is pretty busy.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Smith, you want to do a prayer and pledge for us, please, sir?
Okay, we will call the tentative budget hearing to order this September 9th, 2020, City of Apopka. Mr. Smith?
Bless us in the name of the Lord. Our Father, our Son, and our Holy Spirit, bless us with this wonderful blessing of this certain purpose for this opportunity to prepare for the upcoming fiscal year and our budget process. We ask our Lord to lead us, guide us, and direct us. Our Father, we ask that you multiply, oh, God, these blessings of that, this bountiful budget that you proposed for us, you know, we might be providing the resources to the citizens of this community. Blessed now, in our Saviour's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pray that Jesus Christ is with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First off, I guess we'll, is there any public comment? We have anybody, I don't guess everybody's employees other than former Commissioner Diane Velasquez. You got any public comment?
Oh, none here at all.
Okay, all right. All right, well, Edward, I guess it's your show. Oh, you have somebody?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to thank Edward, gosh, he's worked a lot of weekends and I know that the staff across the board have worked a lot of, a lot of hard, a lot of hours put into getting the budget that, you know, I think it's a fair budget. I think that we try to take care of all the needs and even a few of the wants and so I want to really thank Edward and all of our department heads and their, and their staff for getting to where we are tonight. So Edward, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, you know what, I really, I want to reiterate that before I get started because this is, I want to go, I'm going to go through each line at a high level, but I'm going, we've been through the, into the weeds and we've gone through the workshops, but I want to thank the staff too because I can tell you it's been a lot of long, hard hours, long late hours for some staff and staff has done a really good job and so I think this budget before you is very thorough. I think you'll see that it's detailed, everything's going to be explained. You'll get to see where we've got some hardships and where we have some good news in some other areas. But with that being said, I kind of want to begin before we start. If you recall, back in, in September of last year, we felt that we had a really good conservative budget that would handle all or most of, a good portion of all of our wants. We had a really great budget, this one that we're in, 2020. The, of course, as everybody knows, the coronavirus pandemic changed our plans in the middle of March in a dramatic way. So I think this is where the staff is to be commended because we have some valuable employees who have stepped up, they've helped us to reduce some of the expenses where possible, keeping in mind that our service level is still important, making sure that we have that top-notch service level. And that even though, as you can see, as you've heard at the 1:30 city council meeting, looks like we could be anywhere from two to two and a half million dollar shortfall in sales tax for this current year that we sit in. But I think with the help of the, I'm hoping with the help, but we still have a month to go, but with the help of our employees and we've been very, very careful in what we spend, that hopefully we will not have to get into our reserves for this FY20 year, which will help as we move through this budget. So you'll, as you, as you move through this budget, you'll be able to see that that could be a big help for us. So the meeting you have, the meeting we have tonight is the tentative budget hearing. We will set the tentative millage rate. Keep in mind, whatever we set that millage rate at, we can go down in the final hearing, but we cannot go up without extensive filing or hearing requirements and notice requirements. This meeting was advertised on the TRIM notice and the proposed property tax bills for 515 this evening. So the agenda, we'll talk, I talked a little bit about the budget process, we've talked a little bit about that. We'll talk, the calendar, we'll talk a little bit about that. I want to start with some budget highlights. I'm going to kind of give a high level of where we are and when I say high level, looking at the budget for the whole city, not just each fund, and then we'll go into the fund level. I want to talk about some infrastructure improvements. We have heard you loud and clear, that's an issue, that's an area where you guys have really, an area where we needed to put some funding and we've really worked hard to, for some major infrastructure improvements to show in this budget. Capital items, there are very significant capital items, I want to go through those. Again, I'm not going to go through the, some of the smaller items, but I definitely want to go through some of the big capital items and our capital needs. Items that are excluded, there's a list in here that'll have the items that either were on a wish list or things that we've had on the horizon that are not in this budget, but it's important to see those, I think, for the future so that we kind of know what needs and wants are out there if things do get better in the middle of the year or something changes that we could, we could kind of go to that list. I do, talking about that list real quick, you will see in this budget, the list we had last year, we had some significant items on that list that we weren't able to fund last year that are funded in this year's budget and we go through that, I'll try to point some of those out. Then I'm going to give you a budget overview, so I'm going to give you an overview of the whole, I'm going to go through the fund level, write in the budget book and I'm going to go to the fund levels to kind of show you the revenues and expenditures of each fund level at a high level. We had the workshops that went through the detail, but I'll show you from the high level and then we'll wrap up with any questions, comments, and directions that you have. So the budget process is called TRIM. Typically, it begins in March or April. The estimated taxable values are received from the property appraiser on June the 1st. We have meetings with each department in-house at our staff meetings to go over budget in the beginning to start with their requests. The property appraiser certifies the taxable values to us on July 1. Those are the values, the certified value that we will use to set millage rate. The public workshops are held, were held this year on July 13th, 14th, and 15th and that was with the city council and then we had a public hearing where the citizens could come and be involved as well. You set the proposed budget or the proposed budget was submitted to you on July the 15th after those workshops and the council set the proposed millage rate and the proposed budget at that time. So this, this is the tentative budget, like I said, we'll set the tentative millage rate and the tentative budget tonight. And then our final budget rate, our final millage rate and budget will be, final public hearing will be on September 16th at 6 o'clock here in the city council chambers and that will be prior to our regular city council meeting at 7 o'clock. And then, once the budget is adopted at the final public hearing, our new fiscal year will begin on October 1 of 2020 and go through September 30th of 2021. So some of the highlights that you'll see in this budget. The millage rate at the current budget that you have before you is set at, using a millage rate of 4.1626 per thousand dollars of assessed value, which is an increase of .125 or an eighth of a mil, which equates to a little over 455,000 additional tax dollars in this budget. The city's tax base increased over $290 million, providing an additional million dollars in ad valorem taxes from the increase in taxable value. The general fund is balanced using 900, a little more than 900, almost $927,000 of reserves. And there are no new positions in this budget that you have before you, but there are no eliminated positions as well. So we have funded, we have kept our staff, all of our positions are still funded in this budget. This budget calls for a performance-based merit pay up to 3% for all full-time employees. So there is no cost of living in this budget, it is a merit-based, but it's the chance, an opportunity to get up to 3% based on a merit, based on your merit evaluation. The grounds division operation has been moved to parks and recreation. It used to be under our streets department, it's now moved into recreation, parks and recre, now, it used to be recreation department. By putting grounds in there, it's now parks and recreation. Health insurance, we've had a significant increase here of 11.5%. I want to stop here and say real quick that the 11 and a half percent would be the portion that would be the dependent coverage that our employees would pay, they would, they would have seen 11 and a half percent increase. The city sees 11 and a half percent increase for the insurance that we provide to all of our employees currently. This budget does absorb that 11 and a half percent for our employees' dependent coverage into the city's share. So the city will be, in this budget that you have before you, will cover that 11 and a half percent increase that the employee would have, we would have passed on to the employee for dependent coverage. Property casualty and workers' compensation insurance have increased about 8%. Some other highlights, this budget contains sidewalk repairs. It has contract mowing, as you know, we have the contract mowing now going forward. Your speed humps program, there is $50,000 to start that program and I'll show you that as we get to the next, when we get through the detail. There's some more lighting improvements, there's some funding still for some additional lighting improvements, some areas we've been looking at. Street sweeping program is now fully funded in this budget and there are stormwater improvements, various stormwater improvements that are in here. On the water, wastewater, and reclaimed water side, there are several infrastructure improvements. Some are compliance issues and I will talk about those when I get to that fund, but there is definitely significant funding for water, wastewater, and reclaimed water infrastructure improvements. As you know, the garbage rate, this budget does call, you recently passed, increased the garbage rate 3% for residential and 6% for commercial. This budget does include those, that rate increase, along with the two additional personnel that were added to that budget. Some significant improvement, infrastructure improvement, these are some of the bigger infrastructure items. Design and construction of the traffic light at Vic and Lester Road is in this budget. Harmon Road extension design is in here, that, that funding is in here for the design of the extension of that road. The St. John's River Water Management District site road improvements, they'll begin their construction, our portion is in here for the turn lane and the entrance way that, that's part of that project. The West Kelly Park Road capacity and safety study is in here, so we will be studying the traffic on West Kelly Park Road due to all the foreign base code and the activity that's happening in that area, this is a, that calls for this study. Peterson Road and King Street, the funding is in here to make those capital improvements as well. New sidewalk funding, there is sidewalk funding in here for new sidewalks, like Mayor talked about. We also have the money from the onsite media, so that funding will, is also included. Stormwater, there's stormwater for pipelining and stormwater fixes, we've got some issues in some places in the city where we've had some stormwater issues that we are, that we have put some funding in for, as well. There is an additional restroom facility and an ADA walkway for Northwest Recreation Complex. If you remember, we had to use the ADA, we used the ADA money that we had in this current year to finish the, to, to fund the restroom and the dugouts, and the one section of the dugouts. This is, this is funding to do a second one on the other dugout. The Grossenbacher Water Plant well upgrade and the Plymouth Regional Water Plant upgrade, this is a compliance issue, this is some funding to deepen the wells at both of those. So there's funding in there to meet the compliance issues that we, that we have on those wells. West Kelly Park Road 16-inch water main, Golden Gem Road 16-inch water main, Effie Drive 16-inch water main, US 441 16-inch water main. These are some significant water mains and as you know, with the foreign base code in the Kelly Park area, we have a lot of activity. Publix is coming and so this is, this is putting those lines into that infrastructure in that area where it is needed for future growth. There's also lift station upgrades, there's some money for lift station upgrades, there's also funding in the five-year capital plan going forward. We have a lift station program that we're putting in place so that we're doing lift stations every year. West Kelly Park Road has a 12-inch sewer main, this is the sewer main that goes with the water and reclaim lines that are out there. The Golden Gem reclaimed water plant and the Northwest reclaimed water transfer pump station, those, we got a grant for, there's a $4 million project, it was 50% state-funded, so our 50% is in here as well for those projects. And then the Golden Gem Road 30-inch reclaimed water main is also included in this, in this budget. So you can see there's a lot of water, wastewater and reclaimed water improvements in that, in that Kelly Park, the foreign base code, Kelly Park area was where we have, is where we have the need for the infrastructure improvements. Some of the major items that are in here, there's a replacement ambulance, we're trying to be on that schedule, we're replacing an ambulance every year. There's brush truck pump replacement, so there's some pumps for the brush truck replacements. The air packs for the fire department, the replacement program, we continue to fund that every year, that's a program we're on, so we're replacing those every year. There are 12 police vehicles in this budget. Computer upgrades, desktops and laptop upgrades, new computers and new laptops are in here for IT and for the, for the, for the city, it's in IT's budget, but it's used throughout the city. There's ADA compliance funding for some of our doors and entryways, there's some funding in there so that we can continue to stay on that program. And then there's funding for asset management software that you heard in some of your workshops. Community Center VFW flooring, there's some money in here for the, to redo the flooring at the VFW. We had some funding in last year, but we've put some funding in this current year so that we can, can take, pick the best option to get that done. There's ACA unit replace, or AC unit replacements, so there's some money for air conditioning units that we've had to replace. There's the Fleet Service Truck, this is one of those items, if you remember Fleet, I think the truck is, I don't remember exactly how old it is, but I know it's limping along and they've been holding it together with wire. That's what, that is what Charles has told us, so I think it's finally overdue, but there is a, that was one of our items that we didn't fund last year that we were able to fund this year. Recreation field equipment and mowers, there's some finishing equipment for our fields to help our, help at our fields and then there's, there are mowers in here, replacement mowers for, for recreation. Museum sealing and repair, the museum, that was an item, if you recall, also that was not included last year, but this year we do have that in this budget. We need to make the repairs and seal the museum, as you know, the logs and that, and the wood and over there is, it needs to be repaired and sealed. There's also talk of doing some expansion to the museum, they have some money. We have some money that's been designated, that was collected, to maybe do some expansion of the museum. That's not in the budget, but I wanted to point that out, that that's, that's an item that, that we could come back with later too. Automated side load garbage truck, as you know, from the, when we went over the sanitation budget, there is a new side load and then there is the one that we bought, if you recall, we paid $70,000 in the current year so we could get it going. We will have to pay the, the additional $300,000 in this new budget, so it's included in here too. So really, we'll be taking possession of two trucks. So some of the items that are excluded, Fire Station Number 6 is not in this budget. The Fire District Chief, you heard the chief talk about kind of looking at another plan, a plan where he wanted to do an additional Fire District Chief, that's not funded. There was talk of additional police officers, they're not funded in this budget currently, but I will tell you that, and I've talked to the chief, we plan to apply for the COPS grant in January. And so if you recall, about five years ago, we applied for a COPS grant and we were awarded five police officers. And that's paid over, you know, it's a, it's a percentage, they pay a higher percentage the first year and then the second, third, and fourth year, it, it, it decreases and then at the fifth year, we take on 100% of those officers. I will tell you that this budget today that you have, we're taking on all five of those, the grants run out, so this budget does include funding all five of those 100% in this budget. So another item that's not, that's excluded is the audio/video city council chambers equipment. Again, that doesn't mean we're abandoning this, we're looking at it. We'll see how we, how we end in this year for 20, FY20, to see if we can kind of work that in and through that, through, through there. Because I know there's been a lot of talk about that. Computer servers, there's some computer servers, Rob has been able to put some of them off for another year, but there's some of those that, that are not in here. Additional fields for Northwest, Brian and his group would like some additional fields, those are not funded in here. Amphitheater bathrooms, there was one bathroom funded, so, in the dugout, so that'll give us those two dugout areas or those two fields, squa, or those two pads and, and you know, maybe we can go up to the amphitheater restroom in the future. Storage building for Recreation Cemetery, as you've, if you've heard storage needs, storage needs, they're not in here. Again, this is an item, I think, we'll see kind of how we, let's see where we end this year we're in, let's see how we go next year and maybe, or through the, through the FY21 budget and maybe there's an opportunity for us to, to take some of these substantial items that are kind of critical and, and work them in depending on how things, how revenues look. New building for Fleet and Streets Division, that was in, that's in their five-year capital plan, so that's, that's been pushed out one year. Fiber replacement at City Hall and Public Services, we've put that off, this is one, I think, that was off last year, so this is one that didn't get bumped up into this current year, so that one's still sitting there. Street resurfacing, there's not a lot of funding, there's a little bit of funding in here for street resurfacing if we have some kind of an emergency situation, but like I said earlier at the 1:30 meeting, we wanted to get the study and the study's going to take us a while, so I think what we do is get the study, we've, we've proposed to get the study done so that we can be ready the next year for resurfacing. And then Border Lake flooding, as you know, that's been an issue, an ongoing issue that we've had. So that's one that's on there that we, we're still working with our partners and, and that's one that's not in here, but something we'll have to deal with. So with that, I want to go to the actual budget document. So on the org chart, you can see here on the org chart, I wanted to show, I apologize, I know that, I think the viewers at home can see it better than, than we can here, but if you're, in your budget packet, it should, you should be able to see it pretty clear. I just wanted to highlight here that Parks and Rec, you can see that the cemetery and grounds is now part of Parks and Rec, it used to be Public Works over here with Streets, so this is the only change on the infrastr, on the organizational chart where we, that we've made any moves, is that we've created Parks and Recreation by putting grounds and cemetery together. We feel that that's a better, a better place for that because they maintain the parks, they keep most of their parks up anyway, so we felt that it was better in looking at surrounding areas, what they do, they have a Parks and Recreation Department, since they maintain the parks, maintain, they can maintain our other facilities like City Hall and, and fire stations and things like that. So we've put that group all together so they can work together.
Does that include medians, mowing of medians?
No, that's the streets, so the medians will stay with the streets, that's just all of our facilities, so they'll keep our facilities. So this is the millage rate calculations and tonight, this, the budget that you have, like I said, is, is balanced at a millage rate of .41, 4.1626, which equates to about a little more than eight, 455,000 additional dollars. If you look here, this is your total for the year, total taxes are up almost $1.6 million of revenue with the, the increase of, the eighth of an increase of .125. It creates $15.1 million and last year was $13.5. This graph shows you where our millage rate is, this is with the tentative millage rate set at 4.1626. As you can see, we're still the lowest of any full-service city. You can see Orange County is 4.4347, we're 4.1626 and then some of the other ones, Winter Garden is 4.5, Okoe is 5.5. Keep in mind, these are proposed, this is, they have not set their final, so this is, this is based off what is proposed as they work through their workshops. They could go down. So on the overall, this is the overall budget and you can see that property taxes, this is, this is looking at the city as a whole. You can see that property taxes, the 15.4 in property taxes equates to 11% increase. Some of the other, the other taxes you can see are down, this is gas tax is in this number, so you can see, again, this is all taxes overall in the whole city, so when we get to the Streets Fund, you'll be able to see, see how big of a hit it was actually on the Streets Fund. Enter governmental, this is very important because this is your sales tax. So you can see that the absent sales tax and the state revenue sharing is down 13%. This is where we took a really, a big hit of about $1.7 million. Charges for services is up about 4%. This is your utility rates, garbage rates, as you recall, we increased the garbage rates, so there's a little bit of an increase in charges for services. Also, this would be where the ambulance billing fees and all of that are included. Fines and forfeitures, very small increase, not much increase at all. Impact fees, you can see there's a 10% increase in impact fees. As we get to those funds, you'll see how, how they, how they come, where they, where that increase comes from. Investment income, you might ask, why is investment income 50%? Well, if you look back here in 2019, we generated almost a million dollars in investment income. Last year, we budgeted $351,000, so we've actually performed way better than that in And you might say, well, rates aren't good, it's going to be, don't look like they're going to be that good in 2021. This is because we've estimated too low in the year before, so this is not reflective of additional interest that we're going to earn based on FY20, it's because the estimate that we had in 20 was too low. You can see that we were getting a million dollars and we're projecting to be cut in half from the actual in 19. Miscellaneous revenue, you can see that's a 22% increase. This line is kind of, it takes in all those revenues that don't have classifications from when we sell property, scrap sales, things like that. There's other miscellaneous revenues in certain little funds, you'll see as we move through them, that, that don't have a classification, they fall in this category. Transfers, you can see the transfers are down 2.22%. This is the transfer between funds, most of this is the administrative transfer from the utility fund to the general fund for their services. And you can see, you might ask, why is that down? That's down because the street, the money that's transferred to the Streets is, is lower this year than it was in the prior year because part of the state, state sales, or shared revenues that have to go to the Streets Fund and so they're down in the general fund, they'll be down and the, the transfer will be down. Grants, there's the $2 million grant I talked about currently as we sit, that's the only grant that we know that for sure that we have right now that's budgeted, so that's included in the budget to help offset with those, those water improvements in the Kelly Park area. So that's what that is. Keep in mind, you do have the $250,000 that will carry forward, you guys set a designation of $250,000 so that as we move through the year, if there's grants we want to apply for, we have that match to be able to, to apply for those grants. So we will continue to apply for grants, just because we're in the budget, we're adopting the budget doesn't mean we will not continue applying for grants, we will continue to apply for grants every chance we get.
So that won't go down, but possibly go up?
Yes. Usually that goes up because we don't, we don't know what to budget in the beginning of the year on some of the grants, but this one we're sure of, we got pretty, we've got assurance that we're going to get this one. And then reserves, you see 14 million, whoops, I hit the wrong one every time. You see $14 million, last year was $11 million, and you might ask me too, why, that's a big number. Well, the reason that's there is the majority of that, of those reserves are coming from your transportation impact fees and your, your utility impact fees. Those dollars are kind of built up, they're banked because those projects take a little longer sometimes to perform, so, or to complete, so those dollars, we're basically taking the reserve dollars from those funds to do the projects, which can only be spent on those projects. That's the only place they can be, that's the only way they can be spent. So then, look at-
Where would, where would we see the detail behind that, in case we're asked?
I'll show you that when I get to those. When I get to those, those funds, I'll show you that. So, so revenue, where does the revenue go by the fund, by fund? You can see that the general fund is almost $52 million or a 3% increase overall in general fund in total. Streets is down 20%. When we get to Streets, you'll be able to see a significant, this is where I was telling you, the gas tax and there's some, there's another revenue item in here that we'll talk about when we get to that fund. Transportation impact fees, up a little bit, 4%. You can see that we're collecting about the same amount that we projected the year before. Again, here, we, we use reserve dollars, this is one of those funds and when we get to that fund, I'll, I'll show you, I'll highlight that too. These funds here, the law enforcement trust funds, federal, state, the police discretionary fund, those funds, we usually budget $100,000. Keep in mind, those, any appropriations or expenditures from those funds come back to the council through the year. funds come back to the council through the year. So this is kind of just a holding, this is just a holy, a kind of a holding spot. Those expenditures have to come to you each time that they want to spend them. The recreation impact fee, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, it's up. You'll see when we get to that fund that most of that is, is, there's some reserve spending there, too. The fire impact fee and police impact fee, you can see there's two hundred and fifty-five thousand in each fund. The only, we'll, we'll get to tho- those funds. There's not a lot of spending in those funds. What we've done in those funds is put some money to do the study, the space study. So we've got to get that up, up and running. So we're going to put a group together to initiate that project, to study our space needs for our police and fire IT and our EOC, so that we can, we have to have, we need to get that study completed, and we need to get that done so that we can figure out what, what needs we're going to need on a building for them. The stormwater fund, you can see it's up twelve percent. And when we get there, we'll talk about those items as well. We've put some additional funding in there for some stormwater issues that we have, that we've had. The grant fund right now currently is only funded at a hu- you only see a hundred and seven. Again, this is one of those where you funded through the CRA, your portion of the, the, the grant, the FDEP grant at Alonzo Williams. So we know that we're on the hook for that, and so that, that money is established. Special assessment fees, this is pretty consistent. These are the ones that we currently have, the three special assessment funds that we have. They have the same assessment every year, so that, that revenue is the same. Community redevelopment, as you recall, this two eight, three eight, four ninety. That is the, the budget, that's just a budget that's brought over into the city budget, to the overall budget, that was approved at the CRA meeting. So that's the same budget that you approved at your CRA meeting. The utility operations, you can see it's up one point eight, not a significant increase here. And we'll go through this when we get to that, that budget, too. Keep in mind that last year was the, the last year of the three, of the three percent increase that we had in utility rates. We're currently having the utility rate study, and they've extended it due to COVID until the end of December. So they'll be coming back with their presentation on the actual utility rate study when they're completed. The utility impact fees, this is a big one, this is what I was talking about. We were at nine and a half million last year, thirteen point one million this year, thirty-seven percent increase. And this, when we get to those rates, you'll be able to see that we're using some of those reserves that we have built up to do those projects, those impact fees that were paid in the Kelly Park areas to do those projects. The utility operations is flat, it's the same. As you know, we've, we've had, we've struggled with that fund. But, and you can, and you can tell from, and you, as you know, in the budget or whatever, that's an item that we're going to look to try to put on the market, to see if we can put up for sale, to see if we can get someone to buy that, to actually expand that and do more with that and provide more services to our airport. It's just our operations. We're talking about not selling the whole airport off, just our little, our share, our portion of the FBO piece that we have. And then the sanitation fund is up twelve percent. Again, you had a three percent residential, six percent increase here in utility rates, I mean, in, in garbage rates. So when we get to that fund, you'll be able to see that. So your total budget is just over a hundred and five million dollars. Your tentative budget's over, a little over a hundred and five million dollars for fiscal year twenty-one. And that is a six percent increase over the last year of, which was at ninety-eight point, point nine. So you look at that, and you wonder, where is the significant increase? Why, why is the budget so much bigger over the prior year when we're going through all these times? Impact fees, those projects that were, if you look down in here, four million dollars, little, less than four million dollars, is utility impact fees that we've collected in prior years that we're doing, we're completing those projects. So on the expense side, so on the expense side, the expenditure by type, you can see that our personnel services is up four point three percent, forty-four million to forty-six million. And that is due to the merit program, the insurance increases, and any pension increases that we have based on the, the going forward for the current year are in that number. Operating expenses are down almost four percent. And that, again, is the, those, those come from the departments, the operating expenses that they put through their budgets in the departments. Capital outlay is up forty-one percent. Again, you look at this and you say, wow, it's a five million dollar increase. These are those infrastructure improvements, those water lines, those roads, the sewer lines that we're, we're building. So you can see there's some significant impact, infrastructure monies going in there that are included in this budget. Debt service is down three percent. So slowly but surely, we're, we're, you know, the, the debt's coming, coming down. I think we have a couple, one more, two more years of a big one that we have on the Northwest Recreation Site, and that'll free up about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think, there. And then there's some other ones that are closing, too. So the picture looks good on our debt, getting our debt down so that if, you know, depending on the infrastructure improvements that we're going to have to do in the future, we'll, we'll have capacity. And then contingency, there's four hundred and forty thousand dollars. What is contingency? That is actually the dollars that are going, the police and fire impact fees that are coming in, that we are, we are banking in those funds for the future improvements that we need to make to, could be the fire station, or maybe the public safety complex building or whatever. But it'll get, we'll have some funding for those projects. So the citywide-
Real quick question on the debt piece. How much of that debt exposure is, do you have that broken out by general fund versus enterprise?
Yes, it's in here. We'll see it in here. You'll see it in here. So the functions, general government, seven point eight million dollars. Community development's two point three. You can see as you go down through here, public safety is thirty-one million of the hundred and five. Debt service and transfers is fifteen point nine nine. Again, the, the debt service was seven, so you can see the other seven, eight million is the transfers, which we talked about on the front sheet, which is the transfer from the utility fund. The, pretty much, the sanitation fund, you can see, fourteen percent for that fund based on the rate. So this just breaks it out by function of where the money's going. And you can see that, that, that a big percent of it goes there. And I wanted to show, what I wanted to show on these graphs, I think it's important to show here, to see that personnel services represent forty-four percent of our budget. So forty, forty-four percent of our budget is, is our valuable employees. And then twenty-three percent is our operating expenses, thirteen, or eighteen percent represents capital. Debt service is seven percent. Contributions are zero. That was in there because we had to make contributions to the city center. That's gone this year, so we don't have that in the current year. Transfers represent seven percent. And then the contingency is the, the money that I told you that we're putting in to the fire and police impact fee fund that we're rolling over to save in that fund there. So I think that's important to see. And then I think it's also good to see here that the expenditure by function, keep in mind, and I'll, I'm going to do a general fund once, you can see how much of the general fund goes to these functions. But I think this is important from a high level to see where the money's going for services. You can see that public safety's thirty percent, and that's thirty percent of the total city budget. So this takes everything into account. Sanitation's five percent. General government's eight percent. Utility system has dropped off on here. But I think that it was like thirteen percent or four, fifteen percent. But anyway, you can see community develop, community redevelopment is three percent. Stormwater represents one percent. Culture and Recreation is five percent of the overall. So I think this is a good picture to kind of show you where the dollars are going. Total budget goes based on services. So let's get now and kind of into each fund. And I think here, what we'll do is let's, you can see that property taxes for the general fund, overall taxes are, are up seven point three percent. The majority of that is, or most all of that is in property taxes. Again, this is the, the property tax we talked about, creating the millage rate, using the millage rate of point one two five. License and permits, very flat. This is an issue, this is an area we'll watch, too, as we move through next year, to see how things are going, how development's going. And so it'll be, that'll be a telling time, I think, to watch, to see how those numbers come in. Here's where the, the biggest impact we've had is related to the sales tax. You can see that, if you recall, we were about, we had, in the original budget, we had predicted twenty-five percent reduction. And then we were wrong a little bit. The half-cent sales tax came in, it was twenty-seven percent. So we were a little bit. The final numbers that have come in, which, which were we use, which we're using the state estimates in this budget, they're projecting that the state, the state revenue sharing will be only about eleven point four percent reduction, and that the half-cent sales tax will be sixteen point four percent. So we've gained a lot of revenue right here based on the state's projection.
That's the Commissioner Smith bump, is what they call that.
So again, we will continue to monitor these and watch these like we're doing now. I think that's critical to, to watch. But there's where we gain the revenues that we talked about. If we did gain, if we did gain some additional dollars, we could do more. So keep that in mind. Charges for services include, you can see they're up thirteen percent. A lot of that is due to the orange county contract that we have, due to our EMS billing rates, where we, you know, we, we went to the new company, and we've got, we've increased those rates as well. So there's an increase there in those fees. Again, that was very positive for us in this current budget year. Your fines and forfeitures are, are flat. You see a big increase here from the, and you'll look, and you'll see contributions and donations. You kind of have to look at this pa- whole package here, when you look at this total, and look at this total, because these items are kind of, we have them calculated, we have them different lines for different donations and different pieces. So this is always a hard area to budget because you never know what you're going to get in rebates or settlements or prior year reimbursement and miscellaneous revenues. So, but overall, this line's up. But if you look at them in total, the miscellaneous revenues in total based on what we actually collect, it's pretty, pretty close. Hopefully that we will maintain. We were at one point nine here, and then we're thinking about one point four. And then the last piece of the general fund, which is a big component of the general fund as well, you can see this is the transfers and the reserve. So there you see where I talked about, we're going to use nine hundred and twenty-six million dollars, or nine, yeah, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars of the reserves to balance the budget. So you can see that, and then the transfers from the other funds. Again, this is the third year, I know that we have not increased the transfer, but we're under a study right now for that administrative transfer to come back and tell us what that number is. So we have not made any changes to that until we get that study. So as you can see, three percent, just over three percent, the general fund, the revenues have generated just over three percent. On the expense side, general government, there's a five percent increase, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Again, a lot of the increase here is in our insurance for workers' comp. You know, you saw that's up eight percent. So we have additional insurance funding there. There's an increase here, there's a decrease in, in my budget, in the administration. There's an increase in the mayor commissioner's budget. Again, moving a person, we moved a full-time person to that, to that area. You can see that the stiff payment is gone because we will have paid that Martin Road agreement off. So there will be no stiff payment included in this, which is good news because that frees that Ad Valormen future years up to be used for other items, other services. Police services are up almost a million dollars, nine hundred thousand dollars, I'm sorry, yeah, nine hundred thousand dollars. Fires up five hundred and seventy-six. So you can see the majority of the increase in the budget, one point five million dollars, is going to public safety. Planning and building is down a little bit, sixty-four thousand dollars. Public services is up a slight amount of two hundred and forty-six. This is where we had some of those, the truck for fleet, and then we had some capital improvements that we, that I talked about on the front, about the AC and other things that we're doing to our facilities. So that's why it's up. This is budget now shows that parks and recreation, grounds and cemetery are all into one. And you can see, we've merged this together, and there's about a two hundred and ten thousand dollar reduction in the recreation budget when we add those in there. Keep in mind, if you recall from those budget work sessions, there was talk of eliminating an inmate crew. We did that. We've eliminated an inmate crew out of the grounds division. And so there's some savings there from that. Debt service, you can see here, the debt service for the general fund is only down about eighteen point. Commissioner Becker, here's where that seven million debt service, two point nine of it is general fund debt service every year. It's down about eighteen thousand dollars. And when I get to the governmental side, I'll show you that difference, too.
Yeah, on the, that's weird. On the, on the graph for general fund, I thought it said debt service of five point six three percent. Do you have that graph?
Five point, for the general?
For general fund, on page eighteen.
Yeah, let me get there.
Or on eighteen, that's revenue. Expenditures on nineteen.
Oh, that's five point, it's two point nine payout, but it's five point, five point six percent of the whole, of the general fund budget payout.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what I was going at.
Okay, yeah. So six percent almost is, is general fund payout. And then you can see down here that the transfers, the only transfer that we have out of the general fund is the transfer to the streets improvement fund. Again, that's based on sales tax dollars. And so that transfer amount last year was eight forty-four, this year it's five fifty-three. So that's a two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar reduction to the streets fund. So it takes a, a pretty big hit right there for the streets fund. So that's general fund. So that's the general fund on both sides. And let me go back, because I wanted to show you the graph on, on the general fund. I wanted to show you the graph. So here are the revenues. This is just general fund now. You can see taxes represent almost forty percent of the general fund budget. Licenses and permits are about twelve. Intergovernmental revenue, which is our second largest piece of it, is twenty percent, almost twenty-one percent. So sixty, sixty-one percent roughly comes from taxes and intergovernmental revenues, which is also taxes. Charges for services are seven percent. Fines and forfeitures are one percent. Miscellaneous revenues are two point seven. And then other financing sources and transfers from other funds are thirteen point eight. Again, the transfer from other funds is from the utility fund.
Can I ask one real quick question? So I'm probably oversimplifying this. If we look at fifteen and sixteen, what you were just going through in terms of revenue, if I normalize out our funding from reserve of nine twenty-six, nine for the proposal for next year's budget, and I take that out of the total revenue on a general fund basis, that gets me to fifty-one million and thirty, fifty-one million, thirty-five thousand, which is really only, I don't know, two seventy below what we got in eighteen, nineteen? Is that, am I reading that right? Or are there other kind of soft spots that I'm not leaning into? Because one, it would suggest that our revenue story is not too, too off, you know, two years removed.
Right. So you're looking at this year and this year?
The last actual that we had, that's an actual number versus what we're budgeting for, for this year. If you normalize out that nine twenty-four out of reserves or nine twenty-six.
Right.
It's fifty-one million, thirty-five thousand. So one, one could say, well, yeah, even with all that revenue hit that we're taking, it's not that huge of a miss. Am I thinking about it wrong?
Well, you're right from a revenue standpoint, if we can maintain that. But the problem is your expenditure side is going up way faster than that. So, for example, fifty-one point three, and this year we're going to do fifty-one point nine. If you take the reserve out, you're at fifty-one million. So you're three, you'd be three hundred thousand off from the year before, but you also have added a million and a half in expenditures. So you're really one point eight below. You need this to be one point eight more than this.
Yeah, I mean, I was bifurcated. I was just looking at revenue side of the equation just to start, but I mean.
But you're right, from a revenue side. And usually, we don't see this. Usually, we will see this number be fifty-two point something with the growth. But because if we got hit with the sales tax, the expenditures are going like this, but the revenues kind of staying flat. So, so we talked about those. So, so I want to go on the expense side just to kind of show you where the, where the general fund dollars go. As you can see, almost sixty percent, fifty-nine point seven, go to public safety. Financial services is two percent. Admin is thirteen. Transfer out to other funds is to the streets fund, it's a small amount. Debt service, again, here's the five point six three of the pie goes to debt service. Public services is four, a little over four percent. Recreation's almost ten percent. Community development is almost five percent. So this kind of shows you that the, where the dollars go, and sixty percent of that number is still going to public safety, kind of how it, that's kind of how it's been training and how it's been going. So with that, I'm not going to, that's general fund. I'm not going to go into the weeds of the general fund. I was going to go to the streets fund next. I was going to try to hit each fund like this so we can see the, the top level. And if you, if you need more, get into the weeds more, let me know. So on the streets fund side, this is your streets fund. So here's your gas tax. You can see the gas tax moving along one point seven. And again, even last year, it wasn't that much more than the year before. This year, you can see that it's almost eleven percent reduction. That's significant in this fund. When you're talking about this fund, only has about three point three million in total. So that's a chunk. The FDOT agreement, that number's up a little bit. We have a better number for that than we had last year. The landfill revenue, you asked, where did this revenue go? This is a ho- This is a host agreement that we have with the landfill. We are in talks with them. It looks like that's going to continue, that we'll be able to continue to get that revenue. So we, hopefully we'll be able to add this back. But unfortunately, we don't have a commitment 100 percent yet. And so you don't want to budget if you don't think you're going to get it. So I think this revenue, I think we're going to be good at getting this revenue, getting this revenue back. It had expired, so we're working to get that back. And then this is the streetlight surcharge. This is the portion that the HOAs pay. This is their portion that they pay in for the streetlights. And then you see your other funds. You can see here's the transfer, how it's down. So we've been hit with the gas tax. We have this host landfill agreement. And then you've got, because sales tax are down, the sales tax dollars, part of them have to be used for gas, for, for streets improvement, so that's down. And then you can see here's part of that reserve. I'm using 600,000 of that reserves just to get to this 3.3 million, just to even keep this thing going. And that reserve level right there is not going to last forever. So this is one of those things where we've worked with the streetlight assessments. We'll see where the infrastructure surtax goes. We'll see where we are in the future. But I think it's a good time to get the, the, the street fund, to get the assessment of the streets so that we're ready to go. I wanted to highlight, I do want to highlight on the street side, one thing I do want to highlight in here is I want to show you that in road resurfacing, there's $100,000. Should we get that host money back, that host agreement back from the landfill, we would come back with a budget amendment for you, maybe able to put some more money in there for street resurfacing. The problem with street resurfacing is we have to have the study done before we can do the, the resurfacing, or then we're just picking like we've been picking. And I think we need to get that study done. And this is the year that we have a little bit of a downturn to get, take the time and get that done and done right. But I do want to point out that your speed homes program, there is $50,000 that you wanted to see in that program. It's there and it's funded for, for next year for, for people who, someone who wants to participate in that program.
Has anybody gone through that program yet, that assessment?
No, no. But now that we have funding, I think that a lot of people are probably waiting to see if there's even going to be any funding. But now that we have the 50,000 funding, I think we can now push to see if there's somebody.
Point being is if we had some, some feedback there, is it worth even having 50,000 there?
Well, and that.
Like if you did, if you did five studies and all five of them didn't even meet the threshold, then what's the point of budgeting that much?
Well, and I think now that it's funded, I think maybe push that out to see if there's any interest. And if there's interest, then we can, you're right, see what, who wants to participate. If there's not, then we can redirect that. But, but there's funding there because you guys, you, you know, said that you wanted some funding there, so we were able to try to fork out some funding. I'm not going to go through the law enforcement trust fund. They're all state regulated pretty much in federal and state, so they will come back to you. There's nothing in that budget until they bring things back to you. But I do want to go to impact fees real quick, transportation impact fees. You can, whoops. You can see that last year they were 2.3. This year I'm projecting about 2.2, 2.5. We've seen a little downward trend in our impact fee collections lately. So I want to be on the conservative, we're on the conservative side. You can see we were at 3.5 here. So it is a reduction over 19, but we've seen a reduction in, in those right now. And so I think that we have to be more realistic here. There, here, again, the reserve number that I told you about, 868,000 is coming from the transportation impact fee reserve. So money that we've built up in there, we're doing to finish these, to do these projects. And then those projects you'll see here, they're also in the back of your budget is your five-year capital plan. But you'll see those projects here, and you can see there's over $2 million, I'm sorry, 2.2 million in traffic improvements. And those traffic improvements that I talked about in the, in the beginning of the budget presentation are right here in, in the amounts that are funded for those projects. Oh, I went all the way back to the beginning. Let me get there, sorry. Recreation impact fees. You can see here, 291, 202, 277. I think this is, this is based on what we've collected now. So this is this projection. And you can see, we talked about the restroom facility. Here's the restroom facility at 225 and the 50,000 that we have for the ADA sidewalk that we are funding this year. Fire impact fees, I'm not going to touch on that much. I told you about, the only thing you have here is your, there's 30,000 in each fund to do the space study for the needs of the public safety complex. Stormwater, stormwater fund, you can see the, again, keep in mind, we're having this studied now too. So they're doing this study on the stormwater rates. But you can see last year we had about a million dollars in stormwater budget. This year we have about almost 1.2. Again, 700,000 is coming from the reserves. So that's why that, another piece of that, that big pie that you saw on the front with the reserves, we're using 702 of the reserves here for the projects. We collect about 477,000 in stormwater fees. The grant fund, again, I talked about, we just have the one. This is your, the match from the CRA for the FDEP grant that was already approved. Special assessments, I'm not going to go through those, but they are the same amount as they were last year. These are for the three special assessments that we have set up. In the future, when we set up the other, the, the other assessments, they will become, they will be similar to this where they will have their own funding. Community redevelopment, again, you can see that it's budgeted at 2.8 million. Again, this is just, these are just brought over from the CRA budget. That budget's already been adopted, already been approved. So we're just bringing that over into the city's total overall budget. But it matches exactly what was approved in that CRA. So on the utility side, so on the water utility, you can see that the revenues are pretty flat. Again, overall, there's about a 1.8 percent increase that we talked about. Again, these rates just have projections based on growth, what growth we do have right now that we're looking at. They do not include any increases in utility rates until we are presented with a study to determine where, what that number will be. Keep in mind, again, another use of reserves, 2.7 million dollars. And I'll get to the projects, I'll tell you about the projects when I get back here, a little further back. That is money that we've got in reserves that we're using for some of those projects I talked about on the front, on the beginning of the presentation, when I talked about the water, the Grossenbacher, the regional compliance, the regional Plymouth plant that we have to do, we have a compliance issue for deepening those wells, that, that funding is in this fund. So from an operating standpoint on the utility side, there are actually a reduction. They've done some reorganization here in this fund. They've moved the construction crew and put them in with the maintenance crews. So the construction crew now works alongside the maintenance crews. So you can see there's a little bit of a reduction to the actual expenses for operating on this side. Now, on the other side of the coin, here's where you see that we were 1.3 and now we're going to be at 1.9 million next year. Again, you can see water plant, this 815 is related to those two wells that I talked about. A big chunk of it is for the, 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 the construction of those wells, of deepening those wells. And then the wastewater maintenance side here, this is where you've got money for lift station. We talked about lift station upgrades that we're doing, water pipes, waste, wastewater and, and water pipes are also funded for, to be able to make improvements to those, those water and wastewater lines that they talked about in their budgets as well.
But all that capital outlay is being funded from an enterprise fund.
Correct. That's all coming out of this utility fund, right, out of the utility fund dollars. Here's the transfer. You can see the transfer of 2, of 6.2. It's the same, has been the same for three years. This is the transfer that goes to the general fund to pay for the administrative functions. And again, when we get that study back, we'll see where that number really, where that number should be. And then as you can see that 132,000, again, Commissioner Becker, we're talking about the total debt service, that's 7 million, a little over 7 million dollars. 132 of it comes from this fund. And then the last fund, or let me show you where the rest of it comes from. I think sanitation's going to come first. Okay, so let's do sanitation, then I'll show you the other portion, which is the impact fees, which is where most of the expenditure is this year. You can see here that solid waste is up 7.6 percent. Again, this, this 4.5 to 4.9 is the majority that was where the increase is. And that is the increase in the rates for the garbage rates. If you move down through this fund, you'll see that personnel costs are 1.6 million, supplies and services are 2.7 million. Here's the capital outlay I was telling you about earlier. There was, there's one side loader and then we have the 300,000 that we knew we would have to pay when we ordered the truck. So that's in this year's budget. And then the transfer, again, this is the transfer amount to the general fund from the solid waste fund because it is also an enterprise fund to support the administrative functions of the general fund. Again, that's being studied as well. And then the final fund, that's the airport fund. Again, the airport fund is flat, there's no change to the airport fund. The, the, probably the biggest fund dollar-wise, money-wise, when you look at capital improvements, are the utility fund. And I want to look at this real quick for you because this is important. You can see 5.4 million is what we collected in impact fees. We projected 4.8. It looks like this projection might be a little low. Looks like maybe 5.3 is what we'll have going forward as a projection for impact fees for water, sewer and reuse. The, this is the big telling story. There's the grant of 2 million that we know we're guaranteed we're going to get. And then there's the 5.5 million that's coming from carryover of reserves. So there's the biggest chunk of reserves. It's coming from this, from the utility fund, but it's the impact fees that we've been collecting for these projects that were, that are in this budget that we're going, that we're funding. This is an important slide. So you can see here that debt service is 4.6 million dollars out of this utility impact fee fund. That is for the bond that we currently have. We have a bond that we've had from, I think it was funded, refunded in 2012. So we have a, you have a bond issued that's funded. And then right here is your sewer plant. Last year we projected it to be 3.5 because we didn't have good numbers. We weren't finished with the construction. The actual cost of the, of the sewer plant is this 3.3 million and the 82,000. So you can see that debt service is in, we're using those impact fees to help pay for some of that, for pay for that sewer plant. And then the last piece are, these are all those projects I told you about. This is where the big chunk of the, of the capital's going. You can see here's all the water projects, which are, we talked about the, the water mains, several water mains that we're doing. You have the sewer on Kelly Park, and then you've got the reclaim out on Kelly Park. So you can see a lot of the improvements are being capital improvements, some water and wastewater being made in the Kelly Park area because that's where we're having a lot of growth to be prepared and be ready for Publix because it's getting ready to break ground and all the others, the hospital and things that are coming in that area. So we want to be ready. So with that, I'll go back to the PowerPoint. So that's, so that's going through each one of the funds to show you kind of where the revenues, where the revenues are, where the expenditures are on each side of that. This again is just an overview. There is a copy here for the public as well. It's online, it's a little easier to see because it's so tiny. But this is what we went over in the beginning, telling you the citywide budget is balanced at just over 105 million dollars. This is, this slide talks, talks about where the money is coming from. You can see property taxes, other taxes, charges for services are 28 percent. You can see a picture of how, where it comes from. This also talks about which fund it goes to. You can see the general fund is 49 percent of the total. Citywide budget is almost 50 percent of it's the general fund. Utilities are 22 percent. The expenditures, again, the budget is balanced at 105. The expenditures balance with the revenue, so 105 million dollars. And then this shows you the expenses where we talked about earlier. Personnel services are 44 percent. Operating's 23 percent. Capital outlays 18 percent. Debt service represents 7 percent of the pie, the total budget. And then where the monies are going, you can see the utility systems 24 percent. Public safety's 30 percent. Those two are the biggest pieces. Keep in mind, this is citywide. This is when you put everything together. This is the general fund side. Again, taxes 40 percent, intergovernmental 20 percent. On the expenditure side, you can see public safety is almost 60 percent of the total budget. Recreation's almost 10 percent. Public services 4 percent. Administration 13 percent. So you can see where, where the functions are, where the dollars are going from expenditure side. So with that, that kind of is at a high level, but I wanted to go through each one of those lines because I wanted to make sure you at least saw where the revenue shortfalls were, where we're using reserves, where, what we've done to balance the budget. So tonight, you have to set the tentative millage rate and set a tentative budget. Keep in mind, wherever you set that millage rate, tonight, we cannot go higher, but we can go lower. So keep that in mind. And then I also want to make an announcement that the final budget hearing will be advertised to be held on September the 16th at 6 o'clock here in the City Hall Council chambers. That will be the final budget hearing to set the final millage rate and the final budget for FY '21. And so with that, I can answer any questions, comments, directions, anything else that you want to.
One of the things, of course, back when we were going through the budget, one of the real concerns going forward is our police department and having enough police because we're growing as a city, growing as our number of citizens, and yet we're kind of staying the same there. We know that right now they're trying to fill all the slots that are already there. I did ask you this ahead of time, again, that's where I was willing to say if we need to dig deeper, I don't want to fall behind there. But as you mentioned, in January, we'll, we will go after the grant for those. Last time we got five extra officers through that. But if we don't get it there, we got to realize, it's kind of like if we weren't buying police cars this time, then we're going to have to do even more the next time. You know, Mary, as you said, we're, you know, we're seeing turnaround begin with COVID, but this is the kind of thing that the tail end can follow for the next couple of years. So I think we've got to be wise there. Am I correct, we're at 22.52 for reserves?
We were right at 25 percent at the end of 2018. We do not know where it's at.
I think that.
Or in, in, in 19, I'm sorry. We do not know where we are in 2020. That's why I said we're watching. And I said earlier, trying to make sure, we're holding back, trying to make sure that for FY '20, that we, you know, break even so we don't have to get into the reserves. I'd like to be, you know, a little better, but I'd like to be a little better than that. But like I said, staff has done a great job watching our expenditures and we're monitoring that. We'll have more, we, we won't have a good picture until we get to the end of September. But.
So I thought I had copied that down from here and I can't remember where now, so.
That was on the reserve revenue line, but that was.
Okay.
To talk the increase percentage on that reserve.
Because that's where we've got wiggle room for that, like, you know, again, you know, me and reserves, it's there for when we need it. But if we need it, then I'm willing to go there as long as we have a plan to bring it back. But I, again, I'm leery on that because we're in the, I don't, have we hit the peak for, for even storm season this year?
We're in it and we're starting, yes.
Right about now.
It's starting now and they're starting to get two out there.
And, you know, that, I don't want to get caught behind there on top of all these other things. So that's just my concern, is I want to make sure that we're not so putting ourselves behind because we already haven't added more. And to get to a place where that's going to be a real, real tough one. But again, hopefully we can get those five officers funded. The streets.
I think he was only asking for four, wasn't it, chief? Was it four?
Yeah. No, I'm saying going after the grant.
Right, well, you can get up to five, but I mean, the chief wanted four. I mean, I, I, I would be more than happy to say, let's, let's look at getting the cops grant, which I think is a, is it pretty much a slam dunk, chief? I mean, it's not.
So that's just what I was saying. Hopefully we can do that again.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, if we can fill those spots between now and January and, you know, the spots we've got that are already open and then apply for the grant, you know, in January, I, you know, I'd be, I'd be perfectly fine with that. Then, then all we have to come up with is, not this lot, it's like $60,000. What, what's, what's the all in to get an officer on the road, chief? 70,000?
Seventy-two thousand.
Seventy-two thousand.
Plus a car.
So there's 280, I mean, but I, I'd be willing to, you know.
Plus the car adds what, 30, 40K?
That's what I'm saying, which.
So total, total all in officer with equipment is what?
No, we're just talking about the, if the, if the grant, we get the grant, that's, he's free for the first year. So it's just the car and all the equipment. So it's 72,000 dollars per officer, so.
Is that right? Seventy-two, seventy-two is the outfit and the car, right? Not counting. No, no, I'm saying for the car and the outfit.
Yeah.
The new officer in a car is like 72, right? 50 for the car and like 20? So maybe 65?
Yeah.
55 maybe, chief?
I just want that i- in the back of our minds, knowing that if we're waiting and if for some reason we didn't get that grant, then it's going to make it, we're even going to be further behind. So I just want to keep that in our, in all of our thinking. And I'm okay to approach it based on our conversation by pursuing that grant at that point. But I just, I just want us to be cognizant of that. Second is, of course, the streets fund and we're all reeling from the lack there. And like I said earlier in the meeting, I don't want to be not fixing things that end up costing us double because we waited. So again, a possibility if we, if we had to deal with reserves there. I just don't want us to get in a situation where we put something off that costs us far more because we waited. The last real focus to me, and this goes back to, as we've addressed, you know, everything from mowing, sharpness, is curb appeal. And the reason that's important, that may sound like candy, but it's not because economic development is the key to all of these things, from restaurants to everything else that people have wanted to see and, and things that will cause us to prosper and help refund these things is, is drawing economic development here. And curb appeal is huge. And some of those things, I think, can be approached by, again, just making sure, this is something I wanted to bring up at the end earlier. Just making sure that we are incentivizing businesses to stay sharp. What is our standard? Are, are things being kept up, up on and, you know, penalized if they don't? Just different things that we, when you drive through this town, that it's sharp because that's what will keep businesses saying, you know what, I want to relocate here. And again, working on the economic, economic development committee with the chamber, it's one of the things we're focusing on. There's some different industries that I'm really trying to go after right now. If they get here, it's going to just bring a real uplift to everything else. So to me, curb appeal is like in real estate. It's that first impression. So anything that we can do, and that goes back to our mowing, to all of those things, if it looks like we don't look sharp, then you don't get the second chance to make that first impression. So I do think that's a legitimate thing that we need to make sure is covered. All that being said, that, that kind of points to, and I think we're, we're covered there, is our mowing schedules, is keeping things looking sharp. And that's just something I want to make sure that we do kind of keep on a front burner because it'll affect a lot of other things.
I agree. And then, Commissioner, we are, Jeff on board now. We actually have a meeting tomorrow on mowing so that we can, we're going to meet with our, meet with our contractor. We've moved mowing around. Basically, what we've done is we've taken the mowing around the utility, you know, the wastewater plants, the water plants, the things that are around the utility system. And we've put people in that fund to maintain those for compliance issues, to keep those areas mowed and cleaned and all of that. We have our contractor who's doing a portion of it. We have our city employees who are doing a portion of it. We have now grounds who are doing a portion. We've, we've kind of been handicapped a little bit because the, the inmate crews have not been able, we haven't had the inmate crews in several weeks. I mean, and so that's put a burden on us because they do some things that allow our staff to do other things when they do some of the finish work or whatever, from the edging and stuff like that. So I think once we get through the COVID and we get them back, I think that'll be huge. I think that'll help a lot. And, and we've left the fund, the money, the funding is for the mowing. We, the, so we're staying up with that. And I will tell you that Jeff and I are working on some ideas for curb appeal to make things, you know, we have some ideas that we're going to be bringing to you. We have some dollars, some other dollars that we've had earmarked that we're going to try to put some things together.
And as I was thinking on these things, I mentioned I, I had been thinking about Billy because he was so focused on the plants and those kind of things. And when I heard that, you know, he's, he's graduated, it kind of just took me a little bit and gut checked this, this afternoon. But, you know, I'd like to make sure that we do have a plan for our landscaping design that, that's thought through by those who know more than I. I know when something look good, but it looks good, but I don't know how to get it there.
Right.
So I don't know if some of those can be, or if we already have that in place. The other thing is, is cleaning such as power washing and, and chemical cleaning, that it just looks clean.
Right.
And I don't know what we have in place to encourage our shop owners, especially on our main street corridor here. But just if we can think along those lines and any resources that can be focused there, again, it just gives that wow factor, such as our new parking lot. That really looks sharp. And that's, you know, as I was driving by, thinking about that, it needs to look this sharp everywhere. So where we can focus on that and not hurt ourselves. Again, I don't think that's just eye candy. I think it really helps us in our economic development.
Commissioner Smith?
First of all, the, the curb appeal. I guess when I walked up this afternoon to come to council meeting, there was wet grass on the sidewalk where they mowed, I guess nobody blowed. And I just felt like knowing that today was a city council meeting, they would have made sure that they looked sharp. So that's something, you know, little details that, that we need to take, take a look at. And I know, you know, the grass is wet, so it sticks to the bottom of the moor. And when they came off the grass onto the sidewalk, the grass fell off and, and it's still there. So little things like that, employees need to pay attention to. The other item that I want to make sure that we're taking care of, at one of our council meetings, Jamie mentioned that she was overworked and was stressed and want to make sure that she's taken care of because that's what happened to my hair. So I don't want that to happen to her. So we want to make sure that she's taken care of and I'm hoping that she has the needed assistance that she need that's included in this budget as well. I, I'm also concerned about the police officers. As Commissioner Banksen said earlier, that the, the chief asked for, and you know, I keep hearing you say that we're going to apply for a grant in January, but you know, nothing is guaranteed. And I just want to make sure that we have some, something in place that if that doesn't go through, that, that we're able to, to fund those four police officers that he's requested. We've denied him and, and years passed and, but we keep approving new subdivisions. And so our population is growing, our, our city is growing and, but the police department is not. And we want to continue to provide that same kind of service. So we don't want to keep getting further and further behind by keep putting, putting one off. So I don't want us, in January, the grant doesn't go through, then we say, okay, you'll wait to the next budget year and we'll see what we can do for you. So we want to make sure we don't leave him in that spot. And then can you kind of tell, like, for the public that's listening, what, what, exactly what's the dollar figure on their property taxes with the millage rate that we're talking about? How much of an increase we talking about? Five dollars, 10 dollars?
So, so Commissioner, how it works is the easiest way to do it is, so for every hundred thousand dollars of value that you have, you'll pay an additional 12 dollars and 50 cents.
12 dollars and 50 cents?
Right, and that's assessed taxable value. So that's after they take out the deductions for homestead and all of that. So if you have a 50,000 dollar homestead exemption and your house is, is 200,000 dollars, you'll take that, if, if your house is 250,000 dollars, you get to take the 200, the 50,000 off. So your taxable value is 200,000, you would pay 25 dollars more.
25 extra dollars.
For a 200,000 dollars assessed taxable value, 25 dollars more at this current rate.
Okay, and, and I don't think there's too much to ask, provide, to continue to provide the level of service that we're providing to our citizens. So I, I think the citizens would absorb that, 25 dollars. And so just want to make sure that we're doing that. And one item that was in there, the Peterson Road improvement that we're doing, where is Peterson Road?
That is.
By GE, that's out by GE. So that's, that's all the new industrial stuff.
Industrial, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So those items that, that I have and that are, I, I think we want to make sure that we take care of our police officers and make sure we're taking care of our finance director.
Well, and let me, and I can, I'll speak to Jamie and if she wants to, she's more than welcome to.
I mean, it's easy to maintain hair like this, but.
So here's, here's what, here's where kind of our plan is there. We have some funding in Jamie's budget for, she has some, some contract, independent contractor that helps her now with purchasing. We tried to, to get her to come on permanent. So we would like to, to try to get her to come on as a full-time employee. That would be great if we could do that. I told, we've talked to, I've talked to Jamie about that. So there's funding in there if we decide to add a person. Maybe we, maybe later in the year, we could come back to you and say, hey, we want to add a full-time position instead of the independent contractor. I think the, like we talked about last year, and I think one of the things, important things we have to do is, and I'm hoping when, when Chuck gets caught up with the special assessments that he's working with on the streetlights, that he can work and we can put, we've got to put a committee together. We've got to have representatives from each department to find all of their assets, to give, go out and find everything and give that to us. And so I think what we do, step one, is do that. Get a reconciliation or an inventory of everything that we've got out there. And then decide, do we need to bring on a person? And we hire a person to do that, once it's brought in and caught up? Or do we go independent? Maybe we get an independent contractor to come in and do that. I mean, I think that, I think we have to get that in order first, I think. And it's going to take the departments getting all that in order. So I think we get that in order and then come back to you and say, this is what it's going to take. And, and like I said, we have a really good independent contractor person that we really would like to bring on full time, that we really push to try to bring her on full time. She's been a remarkable person for us, lives here in the city of Apopka. Great, great arrangement that she has with us and does a really, really good job. And so hopefully we can maybe turn that into a full-time position in this budget.
And one of the things that we're, we're also trying to do is we're trying to adjust, you know, the, the, there's thresholds of, of which you have to, like, anything above 2,500 dollars, now you got to go out and get bids. We're thinking about raising some of the thresholds because they haven't been raised in, gosh, decade?
It's probably every bit of that.
So we want to raise some of the thresholds that will make it easier for the purchasing. You know, if now you go to 5,000 or 10,000, you know, up to that limit, it's just get a bid. Then from 10 to 25, now it goes to 50. It will, you don't have to go to a full, you know, RFP, which is, you know, a process. So we'll, we should make that department quite a bit more efficient. So I think it'll, it'll free up some resource. I think we're bringing that next, next?
October.
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 Okay. Yeah.
That'll take off.
Okay, good.
All right, and my last item is our, our deputy police chief. That was one of the items that was mentioned previously, one of the other council meetings and sent up as a position that we need to fill. And is that still in the budget?
The, I will tell you, Commissioner, that the position is still in the budget, yes.
Okay.
So it's not 100 percent funded. It's funded on a percentage basis, based on what we decide to do with that position. I know there's been talk about maybe adding another captain in the police department. So I think that's one of those things we'll, we will have to look at. But the position is in there and it's, it's funded on a proportion. It's not funded because we're not going to have some, we don't have someone hired right on October 1, but the position's in there. I think, I think we've been looking at efficiencies and ways of, 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 I know there's some, some areas where the chief has wanted, talked about another captain. So I think, you know, captain, deputy chief, you know, I think those are things we need to talk about. But the position's in there. And it, there is, you know, it has, it has not been eliminated.
All right, and so if it is eliminated, I mean, we would know first before it's eliminated, right?
Absolutely. You eliminate, that, that's what I said, no positions have been eliminated and no positions have been added. You have to add and subtract all new positions, with the exception of part-time. Part-time and seasonal staff, they're budgeted in here. But all full-time employees are, will be, if they're eliminated or added, they will be brought to you.
All right.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, so I, I mean, I'm, first off, I'm going to start off by saying I hate if we say that we're the lowest taxed city with full services, if it shows, because there's no benefit for me to say that statement if people can tangibly see it, right? And so, Rob, I don't know if you want to stick those pictures up there too, because it's really to piggyback off what Commissioner Banksen and Commissioner Smith have said thus far. But, you know, just to kind of see it with your eyes as well. Because again, when people come to our city, they, they, they eat with their eyes first. They want to see a, a good-looking city. Because, you know, even on the surface of things, if they see that a city is well-maintained, they may think to themselves, what other great things is this city doing? Versus if they see a city that's poorly maintained, they could think to themselves, what other things aren't they doing? Right? And so if, right off the bat, if we're talking about road resurfacing, taking the axe or not having any budget next year, you know, granted, this is just an example, right? But what it says to us is we're very good in a reactive mode. You know, and to credit to staff, whenever I send a note over to staff, they're very quick to come back and say, yep, we'll get this taken care of. Agree, I won't take that away from anybody. But it's very, very reaction. You know, you've got, you've got roadway systems like this that start to crocodile a little bit. This one's kind of hard to see with the shading, but there's actually grass starting to grow within the parts that are crumbling apart. You know, we used to have a great amount of pride in just even, just something as small as our fire hydrants being, you know, freshly painted and up to date and maintained. See a lot of these going around now. And then this, you know, this example right here. I mean, this is right by our Pop Warner field and the base of these trees don't look like they've been weed-eated and probably three or four cuts. And this goes around the entire park. This, this, this curbing right here looks like it's got St. Augustine grassroots that haven't been edged in probably three or four cuts. So when people come and use our prized asset, i.e. Northwest Rec, and they start to see some of this, this in their view, it's, eh, you know, what's going on? And so if we're spending the same amount of money, we have the same resources doing what we're doing this year and we're going to continue that path next year, I don't have a whole bunch of confidence in it. I mean, this is a view of the basketball courts. It's kind of hard to see in the background, but you know, that basketball court is getting to the point where you can't see the painted three-point line. You know, so what are we doing? This right here, where the fields of fame markers at? Those green things right in the middle there are all weeds that have been sitting there. You know, people stop at this intersection for long periods of time and they're looking at that. We've got, and this is, this is our chamber, to Commissioner Banksen's point. If we're, if this is the face of our economic development, because we still don't fund an economic development director on staff, if this is our sole place that we're taking people to first in Apopka, we're missing the mark. Because if you look at the ground cover right next to the sign, again, hard to see in this picture, but there's weeds and whatnot growing out of that. The mulching looks like it hasn't been, you know, touched in, I don't know how long. I mean, again, the, the, the sidewalking could stand a pressure washer too. But just these things in terms of beautification, you know, I'm curious as to why, you know, we set the, the trim notice on the first meeting to the 25 basis points increase. I'm wondering why we're being proposed now a cut in that when clearly you made the comment just a second ago, if we had additional dollars, we could do more. We need to do more. And I think even with that 25 basis points increase that we originally proposed, it's, we're still materially lower than any municipality around us in terms of their overall millage rate. Again, municipalities that do a little bit better job in terms of our overall beautification strategy. You know, we sit in this meeting too, during the last CRA board meeting, we've had this thing that we like to talk to our residents about, the Station Street District development that we want to, we want to get off the ground. And the past few times I ask about it and the response is, we just don't have the staff to be able to do RFP. I mean, this is something that's going to be a shining star for the city of Apopka potentially with some of the stuff that we're doing downtown. And we're challenged because we don't have funding to be able to do basic things that is going to benefit us exponentially. You know, to me too, and, and I'm, and I think the staff were really coming together and, and doing the merit where we've landed, we've increased from where you all initially started from. I'll disagree with the comments made during public comment during our, our, our city council meeting and think that there, there's not an opportunity for them to deserve more, because they probably do deserve more. But I think we've gotten to a good spot. And really regardless, it doesn't matter where they live, right? As long as they provide the service to the city of Apopka, they could live in New Suburban Beach for all I care. But, you know, when we say that we're not even going to, the first meeting that we talked about this, setting the millage rate where we all felt comfortable, and now saying, oh, we're going to pull it back. I mean, the optics around it say, you know, both to a resident, plus police fire, whomever else might be looking at it from a merit perspective, it's that there's no need for it. Which, for us to set sustainability plans, to fleet replacement, to, you know, financial staff, I mean, I, I don't know why we're not going to go with the full 25 basis points. I just wanted to kind of get your feedback in terms of, you know, what the thought. I just wanted to kind of get your feedback in terms of, you know, what the thought process was.
So I think, Commissioner, so you point out some great points, points that I will tell you this. And I'm, I'm going to say this as I sit here today. I came back two years ago to the city, I worked here before, and I came back to the city two years ago. And I will tell you, it has taken a while to get things on track. And I'm going to say that because the employee, we've, we've got great employees. But we've had, we've had, we've had to work with our staff to get staff in the right direction. Trying to get grounds now into parks and recreation. So we have staff in those areas that can perform that function where they belong. You know, we had grounds and streets in one area, you've got recreation in another area, and you've got people saying, that's not my job, that's her job, that's his job. Trying to put those functions together so that we can make this difference has been very, very critical. Some of the areas you've seen is with COVID has hit and it's been very, very tough. We've had a lot of employees out of work this year. I think you would see a lot of things, we're really working hard to stay with some things, but we have had a lot of our staff out of work. We've put a lot on our staff, and I will tell you that we put a lot on our staff. They're working really hard, they're doing a good job, we're going in the right direction. There's been a lot of improvements, there's been a lot of projects that weren't started, that should have been started way before, that we finally got them started and about to complete a lot of them. There's just, it's been, there's been, there's been a lot. But I will tell you, looking at this budget, one of the things that I looked at when I looked at this budget, I was looking at all the parties. You know, I mean, I was looking at the taxpayer, we're looking at the employee, we're looking at infrastructure improvements and problems. The last two years, we put more money in infrastructure and capital projects than we've put in this city in five years. And I can say that with confidence, that I have worked, you can ask the staff, we beat them up with, let's make these improvements. We've got these holes, we've got these problems, we've got, we haven't resurfaced much in six years. We're doing more now in this coming year than we've done in six years, when you add the total dollars up. We've had infrastructure problems, where we had problems with the roads, with the water issues and the drainage issues, trying to fix those before we just Band-Aid something so that going forward, we won't have to touch it for eight or 10 years. So there's been a lot. And I will tell you that putting my taxpayer hat on, I look at it that way too. You know, this is a hit to our taxpayers and we have a lot of our people who are not at work and people who are, have issues and concerns. So I think when, when this budget was put together, it was trying to balance the employees, trying to balance the taxpayer, and then looking at the reserve level. Because they're all three important, I think, when you're doing budget. And I think that's why we laid the plan out. Here's your reserves where they were when we started, trying to focus on where we're going to end in FY '20, because that's critical. If FY '20 comes in and we have to dig into the reserves to balance FY '20, that's a bigger hurdle that we're going to have to follow. But we've worked really, really hard, and I, and I tell you, we've worked really, really hard to not have to do that so that we can be where we are today. So I think when you look at everything, I, we've had to train a lot of new employees, have a lot of new employees since I've been here. We've had a lot of new staff. We've had some turnover in some director positions or whatever, because things weren't getting done. I mean, you look back, I can tell you, you can look back the last four or five years and we weren't doing much. We've, we've put more into those areas now than we've ever had. And I can speak to that from the 10 years prior to that that I was here, that we are putting more. This council is putting more money in infrastructure improvements. And you can see that, because in the general fund budget, you can see that a lot more dollars are going to those places than, than they were in the past. Some of the stuff that's not getting done, the pictures you have, I agree, Commissioner, because I ride this city on the weekends and in the evenings. I turn in streetlight improvements and things, we've done a lot of that, we've worked really, really hard on that. Some of the things you're seeing on the mowing and stuff that you have issues with, COVID has hurt us some. It's not just us, there's other cities that are having that issue too. So I'm hoping if we get through this COVID and our, and we have the right staff in the right places now, that you will see those things get done. So, I mean, I know the inmate crew does a lot of our stuff out at Northwest.
Yeah. Exactly my point, we get what we pay for. And that, I've always had a problem with the inmate crew. I mean, we've got, I mean, we've got wild inconsistencies in their use. That's what I'm saying is, we're going to get what we pay for, and we're seeing that with the inmate crew. I mean, no one can dispute that. I mean, we just proved it right now. But, and don't get me wrong, I, I care about the taxpayer, I'm a taxpayer myself. The median home value in the city of Apopka is $204,800. So when you factor back out that $50,000, if we kept the millage at what we originally set it at, it's $37. I'm not taking that lightly, it's $37. $37 may be more to somebody and less to another person. But on average, half the people that would be impacted if we did the 25 basis points would be paying $37 per year next year to make sure this doesn't happen. That's an easy, that's an easy conversation that I have with the people that put me in this seat, because that's what they're expecting me to do, is make sure that the, the, the basics are being done within the city of Apopka. These pictures, these just paint a very scratch in the surface. You can go around and take a gazillion of these things. But I, I just don't think that we've got to do better. And I want to, if, if, if a smaller amount of investment, this per millage rate, again, keeping us at a very low comparatively speaking, we'll still be able to wave that banner that says, we're the lowest tax rate in all of Orange County, you have a full-service city. That's not going anywhere. But it gets us closer to the mark where we need to be so that we can start doing some of these things and not constantly coming to these meetings and saying, oh, well, it's because of this, or it's because of that, and it's because, I'm sick of it. And it's not, and it's not just the past two years, it's been my entire time up here. It's just, I hear the same thing. Like with Jeff coming on board, oh, we're going to do a study. And I heard that for the past three, like, public services director. So it just kind of moves the needle further and further down, down the path. And at this, at the end of the day, the residents are the ones that are suffering from it. If, if I can go, and again, $37 is going to get budget for street resurfacing, beautification, all those things to make sure that we're proud of our city, I think that's an easy conversation.
Well, and I think, I think if you're going to go there, and that's where you're going to raise that millage rate, you're going to need to make sure that you direct, that that funding go directly to that purpose and only that purpose. Make that clear, because remember, this is Ad Valorem and it'll come into your general fund. And so you need to, you need to make that clear, if that's where you're going to go, that it goes to that purpose and does, and, and goes only to that, that piece or that function.
Why would we have to earmark Ad Valorem?
Ad Valorem comes into your general fund.
No, I get that.
So if you want to use the, if you want to use it for your streets fund, you would need to read, to bring it into your general fund and transfer it to your streets fund. So you'd have to give direction on that. Keep in mind, that's about $455,000 that it would generate. So it would generate another $455,000 if you went up to the, to the quarter mil. But then you would need to direct that, you know, to go to that streets fund for that, that piece, that project or that piece. So, you know, and, and I know there's other issues that we're looking at too, police and everything, so what?
I was going to say, I wouldn't want to direct all of it to, to streets, because there's some other areas that needs to be addressed as well.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think with the police too, there's still vacancies, right? And again, we, we just brought it up the last meeting, the meeting before, where we hired some new utility folks or waste.
Sanitation, yeah.
Sanitation. But that's one of those things where, okay, prove that we can get these people hired and then let's re-talk about it. I mean, having at the very beginning of the year to say, okay, we're budgeting four new positions, when we still got six on the table, that's a different conversation. I mean.
I agree.
But I, what, what I fear is, I'm going to, again, I get stopped on the street, someone says, hey, Cal, my street looks like, you know what? You know, I've got potholes, I've got this, it's just, it's foundationally sacrificed. Hey, what are you all doing about it? Well, next year, we don't have anything street resurfacing budgeted, I'm sorry. Like, that's the conversation I'm going to have? Like, I can't, I can't picture that. And to say that I wasn't going to get the millage rate to a place where we're providing the services that residents expect of us, it's not like we're raising this and putting it to, you know, paint our cars. It's, it's sound foundational stuff that we need to spend in.
To break that down, that's $3.08 a month, which is less than a Happy Meal, which is $3.49. I just have to look it up here. I, I think part of what's a challenge too, and again, we answered the voters', and the people of the city said, we don't want red light cameras. And from the best metrics that we could find, the majority said, we don't want those, so we honor that. But there is a fiscal side of that. Again, that didn't come from taxpayers, but it did reduce revenue from the offenders of that. So now we're having to make bricks without straw in a sense. We've lost that much more and then COVID. We've got a lot of things that we're facing. I don't think, I don't think you're intending to, that it's an attack against our staff at all. I think that's kind of the place we're putting you in. We want you to make bricks, but now no straw. So we, we can't do that either. And, I mean, of anybody, I, you know, I think it's a responsibility of us to keep taxes as low as possible, as long as they're producing the service that is, and the standard that is needed and expected. We're spending the people's money and I don't think they want to live in a tent, I think they want to live in a home, you know? And so that's kind of how I look at this. The other side of this, again, the taxpayer, there are many who have struggled this year. It, it's a hard year, so it's more of a mental game. But when it's broken down in a practical sense, that's not overwhelming at that point. The other side of that is, we're the, we're one part of the pound of flesh that's being taken. But there's other tax entities that are also taking their minor increase. So I also think in that bigger picture, it's not, this is not the only increase that our taxpayers may face. There may be other tax increases as well, which is why I want to stay on the conservative side of that. And to your point, you've tried to find that medium with all of these different factors. So I think that's a great way to approach it. At the same time, I am concerned if our, if the picture there hurts us, which actually will keep the taxpayer having to always be behind the eight ball, rather than getting ahead of that and seeing economic development really bring prosperity to the area. So this is probably the toughest year I think we've ever faced with anything. I just want to make sure that we're not cutting ourselves so close to the quick that we end up with the same frustrations that, you know, I've, I've had different ones say that. We don't mind if it's increased, but I've had others say, don't, don't raise it. So, you know, we can't please everyone, what we have to do is do the best job that the people would expect us to do. And I want to just make sure that we're covering, that's why I was asking you, are we going to cover that with this presently? And I think this picture really, really is kind of pointing to what my concerns have been.
Well, you know, to, to the, the grounds, which is now taken over by Brian. I mean, Greg, one of the guys, I mean, I don't know if you've seen the new palms out here in the, not that, that's, it's a start, but we got a guy that really is just excited about taking over City Hall and, and the maintenance. And because what we used to have was the, you know, the inmate crews come out and just, you know, wrecked it all up. So I've got a guy that really wants to, to do it right. Now, I mean, that's, that's one, one facility and one, you know, but I think, I think we're, you know, when you, you look at where we've come from and where we're at, I mean, obviously this was, was a challenging budget. And, and I also want to think, okay, where are we going to be again next year? I mean, I, and I'm not sure we're going to be in a better position next year. And so I, I, I want to leave a, an arrow in my quiver if I can. And so when Edward and I sat down, we got the increased revenues, you know, coming in from the, from the state sales tax, I said, well, you know what? Let's, let's give some, so we gave the employees a little extra money for, for the merit raises. We took a little bit off, took a little burden off of our taxpayers. And we still got a, you know, a budget that's, I, I think is pretty physically sound. You know, could we, we could, we could go up a mil and, and we could spend every nickel of it. I mean, I don't, you know, there's no problem spending the money. I just, I think, but I think we've got, we've got a staff that understands that, you know, we're, we're, we're making, we're making the best we can with what we've got. And I think we're, we're making progress. And I think we're kind of in that, that third year where, you know, had we not had, you know, COVID, we'd be 2 million to the good right now. We could have, a lot of these things we're talking about, we could have already done. I mean, it's, it's just, so, you know, I, I think, you know, it's, when you look at it from 40,000 feet, it, you see it a certain way. I mean, you're down there in the weeds, it's, it's, it's different. And, and so Edward and, and the staff have been down the weeds, really, you know, working hard to, to make, you know, a budget that I think is fair and it's, you know, are we making it maybe as fast, getting, you know, getting it to where you want it to be, as fast as you'd like to be? Probably not. But, but I also think you want to make sure that you've got the right people in the right places at the right time. And you can't just throw a bunch of money at things and expect to get the kind of results that you, you really want. So, you know, I'll, I'll take the credit or blame for, you know, kind of, you know, when Edward and I sat down, I said, you know what? I think, I think we can do it on a, you know, a one-eighth mil increase. I think we can, we can do those things, we can, we'll leave the reserves as a part of the budget. We'll also give, you know, we'll bump the, the raises up for the employees. I think that with this budget, that we'll be able to, if we could get the COPS grant, I think we could fund that in, in January or February, whenever we know that. I think we'll have a little money left over this year. I mean, that's knock on wood. I think we should be, when we end the year, when you think that we should be down north of $2 million and we're, we're probably going to end up to the black by this much. So, I mean, that ought to tell you how, how well the staff has done to get us where we're at. So we've really worked hard to get us in a position that we're not already a million in the hole on reserves we had to borrow just to make the 20 budget. I can tell you, when you look across, you know, obviously our, our millage rate is low. And I think that's, I think that's something to be proud of. And you look at, but you look at all the other cities, a couple of them are looking at reducing their millage rates. A couple of, I don't think there's anybody in the, the greater central Florida area that's raising their millage. So I think they all, we all understand that, you know, this, these are tough times. And then we, we've probably got another year of this. And, and so I think when you look at, you know, what we've tried to, you know, put, put in front of you is, yes, we can't fix it all this year. Absolutely not. There, there are, there are needs. I mean, I think we've, we've taken care of most of the needs. I think wants, there's some wants that we obviously want. And I think having a, a good road plan, resurfacing plan would, you know, when we get that, I think we will definitely in, in 2021, 22 budget, we want to have additional funding for streets. I mean, absolutely, but, but we don't want to go in, you know, half-cocked and, and not have it, you know, set out in, in the roads that need to be done when they need to be done. So, I mean, it's, it's obviously, it's, it's, you know, for you guys to decide and, and, but. Commissioner Smith, you got any last thoughts or you?
Well, my, my, my last thoughts was, I, I was prepared to vote on the 4.2876 millage rate personally, myself. I felt that's what we needed to do in order to maintain our city to a standard that our residents expect. And when they look and they see things out of order and we say, well, you know, we got the lowest millage rate, when then they say, well, I don't mind paying for the service as long as I'm getting it. And so that was where I was coming from.
Okay. Well, well, here's, here's what I'd like to do is, you know, if we're going to go to the, increase the millage by .25, what I'd like to do is kind of get some ideas of how you want to spend it. So we've got this going into the budget when we come back next. Where, where do you want to spend $455,000? Because we got, we got COPS grant, we got, we got a, you know, we're, we're borrowing out of our, you know, out of our reserves. I mean, where do you spend the 455?
My comment on that is, I don't know that we have to go that high, but what I don't want to do, when we were growing up, we didn't have a whole lot. But one thing we were taught, whether, whether you have the nicest clothes in town, doesn't matter, but make sure they're clean clothes. Whether you have the nicest car, doesn't matter, make sure it's a clean car. And so that's all I'm saying is, we don't have to go the whole enchilada if we don't. I guess what I'd like to make sure is we, we keep enough there. And between now and when we have to make that final decision, that we say, okay, this is what it would take to just bump that up to a level that's going to increase not only the enjoyment and the standard of our own citizens that they want, because I'm hearing those same things from folks. But also that will incentivize business to come, that will draw them, it'll, it'll help us in an economic development. So I'm willing to, as much as I don't like to, some of the streets, I'd like to see done quicker. Like you said, there's some things, we just can't do everything. And we can do a little bit. And I do think you've done a tremendous job. I know how hard you guys have worked on this. So I hope that doesn't sound like an attack at all. But I am concerned that we don't get in a place where we're having to again say, well, down the, I just want to have those clean clothes. They might not be the best ones. We might not be able to buy the brand-new suit this year, but I want to make sure it looks good in that sense. And I don't know what that's going to take. So I couldn't really answer that question there specifically. I guess maybe is there a way to find out from staff how much more? Or maybe it's already covered. If it's covered here, I'm, I'm ready to go with the budget as stated. If it's, if it's not, you say, you know what, we're going to need this much more. If we're going to make sure that we're, we're pressure washing the sidewalks or, or chemical cleaning or whatever it takes, those little things that we need to look at, the grass growing in, in the curbs and the cracks, those kind of things make it look like the forgotten town. And those are the things that I think a little bit will go a long way if we'll focus it there. So whatever we need to do to get to that place, I'm willing to tighten the belt on everything else like you've already done. Does that make sense? I just don't know. Are, are you telling me that's, you know, another 100,000, another 50,000? 50,000, another 300,000? I mean, what does that look like? And that's what I'm asking?
Well, if it means adding additional money to public works, so that they have the resources, the material, the equipment, whatever they need in order to do the sidewalks, even in front of the pawn shop, that sidewalk, it's horrible as well. And I mentioned that one before. So if it means giving public works additional funds, so they can get equipment or personnel or whatever they need to do, hire private contractor, however it needs to be done in order to get that done, that's fine. If it means putting funds in place to make sure, in case we don't get the COPS grant, that we can have those four police officers that he's asking for. And then if we get this COPS grant, we don't need it, then that's all well and fine. Then it rolls back over into the, to the budget. So those are the kinds of things that, that I'm, that I'm talking about. Just don't want us to, to keep nits pitching, because if we got to pay it at a price, if it's going to cost our citizens to continue to be unhappy, you know, I'm going to move from a place, it's the filthiest place I've ever seen, you know, and if we need to put some more money into streets to maintain until we get the survey that we're talking about doing, to see how we're going to prioritize. Those kind of things are, there's some, some gutters along the way that are full of trash and debris. So when we get those floods, those rains, the streets flood because the water can't go down into the drains. So wherever we need to put it, is what we need to do, if that's what it takes.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I would ramp down, start ramping down these inmate crews, to be honest with you, and supplement it with more of on-staff resourcing. I mean, heck, if we're, if we're losing three or four weeks, it's not like we get that money back. That's just money that we're flushing down the toilet.
No, no, no. We get it returned. They're returning it to us. If they're not here, we're getting that money back.
But again, it's not, it's not, it's
But you're not.
Quantify a value to it, right? Even if we get those dollars back, we're not getting the value that we get out of what we're paying on that contract.
Well, keep in mind, keep in mind too, let me tell you this. Brian was talking about the 400 hours. You pay $56,000 a year for that inmate crew. $56,000 a year for the mowing and trimming they do. When they're here and they're doing it, it takes a lot off of our staff, because they can do the finish work, the pickup and stuff, before our guys, our guys come behind in the mowing. So that's $56,000 a year. Keep in mind that one employee for that is probably 65 with benefits. So you'd, and the inmates, there's how many in each squad or crew? So you'd be having to hire three or four people. So at 65,000 each, you're going to have to, and you've got
I get that. That's why I say, start ramping it down, not necessarily get rid of the entire program.
Right. And that's what we've done here. We've taken one out. And we're taking one out and then having our contractor do some.
But then, street resurfacing, I don't think we can go an entire year, two years, really. By the time you pay for the study, the study happens, you have a prioritized list, it's going to be a year and a half before you start doing anything. I mean,
It'll be 2020, yeah, at the end of 2021, we will have the study, and then we'll be able to, to ramp up that going forward.
And I'm assuming that
The problem is, I don't, here's the other problem. Without the study, how do you select the roads? I mean, it's difficult for us just to go out and select roads, because you've got, do mine, do hers, do, and we need that study to help us with that. Granted, the ones that we have now, they were in the hopper a year and a half ago. They just never, we just never took them, got off the ground. Actually, they were three years ago. They never got off the ground. We went through that list, brought it back to you. But before we did that list, there were, there were roads on that list that, that were not, that didn't need to be resurfaced. So we came back and brought that list to you guys and showed you those roads that had Second Street, Hawthorne, Vic, Welch. We picked roads that were really, really bad to make, to get that done right away. Because we had some roads on there that people didn't hardly travel, that were going to be paved. And so we went through and redid all that. But it's tough for staff to pick those roads. That's why that study is so important, to get, to have that study, to make sure that that's getting done. So, you know, and mowing, the same with our mowing crews. We're having a hard time finding mowers. I'll be honest with you, straightforward. We have two maintenance worker, three weight maintenance worker positions that we're struggling hiring. It's hard to find someone to do that job. So again, we're, we're looking at the contractor. Let's push some of this off onto the contractor, maybe push more of this onto the contractor. But then again, those positions that we're not hiring, you're going to have to have that to fund that contractor.
Okay.
So we're looking at all those ways, Commissioner. I will promise you that we have.
I get it.
And I'll say, honestly, over on Sandpiper, the inmates that did that before the city took it over, they actually did a, a very good job. So I don't know, you know, who oversees those to what standard, but.
But like even, so we say, a study has to be the genesis of doing, how do we, how do we fund the stuff that we're doing now? We didn't have a study. How did you, how did you get those on the, on the budget?
The resurfacing that we studied, we put $800,000 in the budget. You guys had $800,000 in the budget, that we carried forward because we didn't do it, we didn't use it. And we used that money. Keep in mind
But I'm saying, how did you prioritize the, the list of roads that are being resurfaced now? And in your current plan, without the, with the absence of a study?
We went through work orders. How many potholes were we filling a day on that? How many pothole work orders we had?
So we can, we can do the same premise without the absence of a study?
You could do that going forward. You could do that going forward. The ones that we've done that we're paving currently this month, or this week that we're starting to pave now, those were all the ones that we had the most work orders on. So you could go back to that and find work orders. We don't have that many on most of the other ones. So it was mainly, those were the ones, we tried to cover all of those, to get them taken care of, so we didn't keep doing pothole repair and patch repairs, so that we could get that behind us, to get the study done, so that we could follow the study. Because as you know, everybody's going to think their street needs to be paved. But at the end of the day, you need some rhyme or reason to, what is the life of that road? How much money have we put into the road? You know, you need that data, we need that data. And there's a lot of miles of road to look at. So, now granted, there's some money in here. Should we have a bad road, like we have with Vic and Welch and Second or whatever, there's enough money where we could do one or two, if we had a major issue come up and we needed to do those, until the study gets done. Like I said, at the host agreement, I'm trying to hopefully get the host agreement back with the landfill, that's $225,000. It looks like that's going to come. If that revenue comes back, then we'll be able, we could take that revenue and put it directly into that, to resurfacing. So, so we're doing everything. I can promise you, we're doing everything. I will tell you that road resurfacing, they want about $1.5 million. Staff is wanting about $1.5 million. And I'm, I'm thinking that study's probably going to come in around that, too. That fund can't sustain that. So future, we will have to be looking, it's not just us, it's every city and the county, looking at ways that we can fund this resurfacing going forward, because it's very pricey. Going forward, we're going to have to figure a plan on how we do that. And that study is, I think, will, will, will help us with that, rather than us just picking and choosing which roads that we do. So, and then you have the infrastructure surtax that was talked about, that, you know, where will that, will that come, you know, about or whatever?
So, so we're discussing $3.08 per household, net effect per month, right? If we went the full amount, that's an extra $3.08 per household, of what people will feel every month. I guess the question then is, as, as you said, Mayor, how do we want that apportion? If we did that full amount?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that's
And do we, do we put that amount and then try and trim that back to where we are now? If we can find out that, yes, these things will be covered, do we keep it on the 16th? Again, we have one more time to figure this out. And that's the thing that's a little bit fuzzy to me. I don't know if we're still going to look like that in our present budget. And I think people really want to see something better than that.
Look at that line.
Again, we, the city has worked very hard, and our, our workers worked very hard. This is nothing against our staff. We're asking them to do this much with this much. And we're just simply trying to say, do we need to give you all more, so you can get all these things done?
And let me, and I know you, you worked hard, put in some extra hours. Let me ask this. What if we told you, yes, we want to, you go back with the 4.2876, give us another budget, keep the one you have, bring us a new one, and let us see where you felt that there was the need to put those funds, and then let us compare the two? Would that be fair?
Well, I think, Commissioner, there really isn't, there really isn't another budget to prepare. Basically, you're talking about, you have additional $455,000.
Right.
Where do you want to put that $450,000? Do you want to put it in police and fire? Do you want to put it in streets? Do you want to direct it to recreation? Do you want to direct staff to say, hey, I want sidewalks cleaned, I want this done, this, this, and this, and here's my 455? I want you to hire six more individuals to do this, to do that. I mean, you'd have to, you, that's basically where we are. I mean, because what, all I would do is change that tax number on the top, and give you an additional $455,000 in the general fund. Now, keep in mind, it'll, it'd be in the general fund. And then ask for, where would you like to see that? You know, do you want to see that in streets, resurfacing?
What?
Do you want to see that, you know, on more mowers, more mowing, more, trying to hire more mowers?
Well, and I guess that's, that's what I'm saying. Bring back the one we have tonight, as is. And then the one where you said you're going to put some in streets, some in recreation, some in police and fire, and then bring us that one, let us look at it as well, and, and let us decide which one we want to go with.
Yeah, I don't understand. So, again, so have, I don't understand why staff is not being kind of the, the, I don't know, good cop, bad cop, is kind of a bad example. But why are you not advocating to what we set as the desired trend, that we, we decided a few weeks back? Why aren't you bringing forth, hold on, why aren't you bringing forth the council? And at the end of the day, it's our, it's up to us.
Right.
We're going to say, hey, we really, we really, you know, we just did a disservice to the people that put us here. Or, yay, we did, we did great, because you all asked for something, and it was well beyond what we were comfortable doing. But for us to sit here and say, where would you spend $455,000? And you, and nothing? Okay, then maybe we don't need to. If, if, if you can commit to doing beautification, and making our city not look like that, with the budget that you have in your hand, and I don't have to send emails every month, fine, I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll be behind it. But if, if we're saying, if we gave you $455,000, what would you do with it? Not to say that we're going to approve it, but where would you put those dollars? But now I'm, I'm reserved and thinking that they would be dollars well spent.
I will tell you that the budget you have before you allows us to do the things that we need to do, to make the improvements. Does it allow us to do resurfacing? No, not that much, like we've done in the past. Why? Because we're doing a study. We need to do a study to figure out what we need to resurface. Staff could go back and pick some roads and say, yeah, $455,000, we want to put in there. Because there, there will be some, I'm sure, that come out of the study. But it's not fair to the staff to have to go pick those roads, when we don't have the information on the history, the years, does it need the, the repair and maintenance over all the other roads? You talk about police officers. Is that, you know, is that the wishes of the council? You know, we've got seven vacancies, but do we want to hire four more? You know, that, you know, that, that's another issue. Maybe we use the money there. So I, I think the budget you have before you provides the service level that we've had. I think it puts fun, it does put more funding in infrastructure and maintenance, maintenance areas that we can do improvements in, in maintenance. Brian has looked through his parks and recreation, putting those together now in this new budget, putting those together so that his people can focus on the grounds more. He's gotten rid of the one inmate crew, pushing more to the contractor, so that they can keep up with the mowing. I think, you know, that the budget you have before you is good budget. It does everything. It balances the budget across all of the things, from reserves, to the, to the taxpayer, to the employee, taking care of our employees as well. So if, if, you know, the, the additional revenue, the additional dollars, yeah, we can go back and come with you some areas of where we think that should be spent, where we, where we could spend that. It's going to come back, I can tell you. And every single department and every single area is going to want a piece of that pie. And so we could do that. But I can tell you, from a staff standpoint, absolutely, resurfacing is one. But I, we need something in place that tells us, which roads do we resurface, rather than just picking them out of the air, or picking them off of, off of the map. So I think, I think that's critical, to have that before we spend any more dollars in that area.
And I just have two last questions. What did we settle on, on the asset management system? What was the final total on that expenditure?
We put $100,000 in the general fund, and we have about $125,000 in the other, in the, so we have 225. And if you remember, we were like 450.
And then, to answer the last Mayor's question, where else would I put those dollars? Put, I don't know how much a contract would be, but someone that has RFP expertise, that can come in and just crank the cities, the Station Street RFP out, so that we don't have a full staff position that we're waiting on, we leave that at the door like tomorrow.
So you mean, hire the contractor to come and write that, or do that portion?
I mean, I would, I would venture to guess there's a company that has skilled RFP, government RFP employees, that can contract out for a very brief period of time to write that particular RFP, we pay them their dollars, and see you later. The benefit to the city would far exceed what we spend on that resource.
That's it. We can get that amount. We can find out with the contractor. We can find, we can get that amount for you. So we can definitely figure out what that would cost.
So, you're saying then, with what you've already built in, it's not going to look like, like that anymore. It's going to have enough to kind of bring up that standard on keeping the curb appeal, you know, weeded mode?
Commissioner, what I'm saying, yes, that we have put resources in this budget to keep the mowing up. We have, like Mayor said, you have Greg, who has been moved to the, this area to help improve that. There's money in the budget for that, those improvements, landscaping improvements.
So, let's call it beautification.
There's money for irrigation. There's money for, right, beautification. There's money for irrigation, there's money for that. So there are dollars in there, yes.
I mean, could you dump $455,000 in streets tomorrow? Absolutely. I mean, there's no doubt. I mean, and if you wanted to roll it till next year, absolutely do it. I mean, and, but I think what we need to do is, I mean, I think we kind of got, everybody's kind of got their ideas. I would suggest that we just go ahead and adopt the, the milledge at the two, the 2.5. And then what I would suggest is, we all kind of come up with our, how we see spend that $455,000, and come back. So we kind of got a, kind of meet, get a meeting of the minds, but rather than just kind of keep. And so, if you're looking at the 455, how would you want to spend it? And if, you know, and then we'll just, and we'll take it back up. We can always drop it.
You can always go down.
We can always go down. So if you want to, if that's something everybody's okay with?
I feel safer with that.
Okay. Safe for that plan?
And just one other question. Is it one or the other? It's only that point or that point? There's no wiggle room in between? We can't just raise it by?
Yeah.
Okay, you can move it anywhere, anywhere down.
Okay, so that'll give me time between now and then to sharpen the pencil, talk with you, look at some things, and maybe say
Yeah. And feel free to reach out to any, you know, Edward can, can, you know, give you some ideas.
Please.
Like, I guess, Jeff, we can get you, like, resurfacing, what is a resurfacing, you know, per yard, or, I mean, per lineal foot? We can get you some numbers, tell you how much, you know, 100,000 will get you. We can, we can do some of those numbers, if that's what.
Yeah.
And just take it from there. So
Absolutely. Mayor, I want to, and I want to say that, please, reach out to me. Give me a call, a sit-down, we'll talk about it. If you want a certain staff in a certain department, because there's something you want to see, we'll show you what we have in there now. We'll show you what we could do, you know, with the additional. But please reach out to me instead of those meetings, so that we can keep in mind that the, the hearing is next Wednesday. So we don't have a lot of time, but please reach out to me and, and we'll, whatever staff we need, we'll, we'll show you what we've got and give you the numbers of, of those dollars, where they could go.
Okay. Everybody good? Okay. So I need, I need a motion to approve the tentative .25 milledge rate?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker, a second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now. So let me read the script here. In accordance with the truth in milledge trim requirements, the city must set the tentative milledge rate and advise the property appraiser of the tentative milledge rate, rollback rate, date, time, and place a final budget hearing. The tentative milledge rate is 4.2876, which represents an 11.92, 11.92% increase over the rollback rate, milledge rate of 3.8309. The final budget hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, September 16, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. Okay. And then last, I just need to get a, we'll accept the proposed budget as, as presented, and then we can make adjustments the next Wednesday. Okay? Got a motion approved?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Mayor, 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 can you do each vote separately?
Yeah, I've already, we just, we did the milledge.
You're doing, you're doing the milledge now?
Yeah, yeah.
We just did.
Yep.
We already put it down.
So, motion approved the budget as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now. Thank you.
Public, let us hear.